Call the Order to Scott County Board of Adjustment Meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. First thing on the agenda is roll call and introduction.
Commissioner Hussein is absent with notice. Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Haas?
Here.
Commissioner Henches?
Here.
And Commissioner Watson is absent with notice.
In introductions, to my far left, Brad Davis is our planning manager. Jason Toomey is Rachel Nossbush, our deputy clerk. In the audience, we have Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator. I don't see Greg. Greg not here today? Okay. Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and Tom Wolf, our county commissioner. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of the September eighth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Everybody in the board has a chance to review the minutes. Is there any corrections or deletions?
Mr. Chair, I've talked with the recording secretary in both of these, but in this minutes it says Ken Robbins, and it should say Kent. So she will make that correction.
Do you have that correction?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other issues on the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor, if I have a motion, second all in favor, say aye.
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 Not in favor, say nay. And I have one extension myself. Okay, the only thing on our agenda today is a public hearing, a number twenty twenty-five dash zero six eight, request approval of variance to reduce the twenty-five-foot setback to ten feet from a local road right-of-way. Burdick Builders applicant and Gerald Jane, oh, I'm not, let me say this right, Wozinski, property owners in section nine of Spring Lake Township. And Nathan, you want to report to us on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The subject property is a point-six-two-acre property. It's located on the southern shore of Spring Lake. The parcel is a hundred feet wide. It's located at the intersection of Raymond Avenue and Vergis Avenue. The public roads wrap around the property. And the parcel currently contains a nine-hundred-and-forty-square-foot home in this area with an attached garage, and the property is connected to sanitary sewer from the city of Prior Lake. It's an unplatted property between two different subdivisions, Thornton's Point here and Sunrise Island here. And it is an unusual shape with a road right-of-way on three sides. So the applicant, by ordinance, is required to maintain the setback of twenty-five feet all along the entirety of this public roadway frontage. Vergis Avenue terminates along the north side here. It serves a shared driveway and a few homes up there. There's three homes down to the south on Raymond Avenue before that ends in a cul-de-sac. The proposed impervious surface on the site is within the maximum of twenty-five percent. So that proposal is meeting the requirements of the Scott County zoning ordinance. The applicant intends to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a new house with an attached garage in July of two thousand twenty. The Prior Lake Spring Lake Ordinance Annexation Board approved a variance to construct a house on the subject parcel at ten feet from a local street right-of-way. And the Ordinance Annexation Board has now disbanded, but the variance approval has expired because it was never acted upon. It is required that it is acted upon within one year, or a variance will expire. And the previous request is, sort of this request, request to reduce the twenty-five-foot setback to the public road to ten feet along the northern property line, northern right-of-way line. The parcel was created prior to the subdivision ordinance and is considered legal nonconforming. The parcel is atypical due to the shape of it, due to having three sides that front on the public roadway. In the past, in two thousand eighteen, a variance was approved by the board to expand a legal nonconforming structure by over fifty percent. That was on South Shore Drive, and to reduce the setback of that existing structure as well. The existing house that we have here on the property, it was created in nineteen fifty-six, prior to the current setback requirements, making it a legal nonconforming structure. The current house encroaches on the road right-of-way. It's actually quite close into the setback currently. And the existing, the other structures, adjacent structures are also nonconforming with the current setback requirements. Both Raymond and Vergis Avenue receive minimal traffic, and the parcel is large enough that the impervious lot coverage variance is not needed with the layout that the applicants are proposing. The proposed placement does allow greater space between the new home and the neighbor's existing house to the south. The existing house to the south is two-point-two feet, as the surveyor found, from the shared boundary. And so having a variance allowing it to be placed further to the north, the proposed house further to the north, does allow for greater separation and distance from that shared boundary line. The natural resources department did provide a memo that was included in the staff report. And it noted that a grading permit will be needed for any soil disturbance on the property. And the Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed district was also notified of this, and they had no concerns or objections to the request. The Spring Lake Town Board has recommended approval of the variance request at their September two thousand twenty-five meeting. And Scott County staff is recommending approval of the variance request per the criteria for granting variances that are listed in the staff report. Mr. Chair, I can certainly stand for.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any questions from this board regarding this variance?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Hall, a variance was granted on this previously. Am I right?
Correct, Commissioner Robbins, in July of two thousand twenty.
All right. So there is some precedence for doing it now, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, the variance being issued previously, there does provide precedence, as does one of the previous variances that was also issued in the same area in the same.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Not this public hearing, anybody like to address the board? Please come to the podium and address the board. If not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
Have a motion, second, close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Not in favor, say nay. Okay, now, what is your wishes on this variance?
Ms. Chair, it's a pretty straightforward request, and it allows the applicant and the builder to build a house. As noted, there has been a request previously that was approved. And for this committee, we are always anxious and glad when the township has signed off on it. So I'm inclined to approve this request.
Okay.
Second?
Motion, first and second, approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Not in favor, say nay. Variance has been approved. Okay. Anything else from us? Okay, do I have a motion to close the board of adjustment?
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second, I have a motion, second, call the board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Not in favor, say nay. Turn it over to planning.
Good evening, and welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting of October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'll start with the roll call.
Commissioner Hussein is absent with notice. Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Haas?
Here.
Commissioner Henches?
Here.
And Commissioner Watson is absent with notice.
Thank you. Also present in the chambers this evening is, at the end of the, to my left, is our Brad Davis, our planning manager. Next to him, it's our deputy clerk to the board, Rachel Nossbush. Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, is in the audience. Nathan Hall, our associate planner, is here as well. And Tom Wolf, our county board commissioner, is over there in the audience as well. Our next item is the approval of the September ninth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners have all had an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll note the same addition that I did for the advisory.
Okay. Noting that you've talked to the...
That I talked to the recording secretary, and Ken will be changed.
Okay, perfect. Okay. With that correction, they entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Any other corrections? Okay. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
One extension.
Minutes are approved. The next item is normally our consent agenda, but there are no items on our consent agenda this evening, so we have a public hearing. It's number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven zero, request to approve the rezoning of one hundred and twenty-point-five-four acres from transition reserve district to transition reserve cluster district, and preliminary and final plat of Porter View, consisting of two lots and one outlot on one hundred and twenty-point-five-four acres, Chris Kubis, applicant, and William and Gloria Henches, property owners, in section thirty-five of Sand Creek Township. And I see Mr. Hall will be making our staff report. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This subject property is located in section thirty-five of Sand Creek Township. The one hundred and twenty-point-five-four-acre parcel is largely open agricultural land, along with a farmstead. There is a wooded area and floodplain that surrounds Porter Creek as it passes through the parcel. The property also has frontage all along the eastern boundary on Red Wing Avenue, which is a gravel township roadway. The applicants are requesting to subdivide the property, create an approximately eight-acre parcel on the north side of the creek, and then also creating a approximately five-acre parcel for the existing farmstead, and then an agricultural outlot that would encompass the remainder of the property. The parent parcel is currently zoned transition reserve, so the applicant is also requesting the property be rezoned. The two thousand forty comprehensive plan guides this area of Sand Creek for transition, which allows rezoning to transition reserve cluster, and allows for a maximum density of one unit per ten acres. The applicants are requesting the rezoning along with the proposed subdivision. And by rezoning, they're able to create that buildable lot, less than forty acres, along with the lot for the existing farmstead. And the outlot can continue to be used for agricultural purposes. In all residential cluster subdivisions within the TRC district, at least seventy percent or more of the non-heidric land, or eighty percent or more of the non-wetland land needs to be preserved in future development outlots. And according to Heidrich soils map, the subdivision contains seventy-six-point-five-nine acres of non-heidric soils, and the outlot will contain sixty-four-point-four-seven acres of non-heidric soils, which is eighty-four-point-two percent. So it is certainly exceeding the preservation requirement of seventy percent. Primary and alternate septic sites have been identified on the plat map for the northern lot here. And the Scott County Environmental Services Department has reviewed the proposal for compliance with Scott County septic ordinance. And while the sites on the northern lot were found to meet the requirements of the county ordinance, staff found the required soil information for proposed sites on the farmstead lot were not included with the application. And so there is some more information that they will be looking for before completing their review. All the septic sites need to be found to meet the requirements of the septic ordinance prior to county board consideration of the plat. No grading is being proposed as part of the plat. Any driveway grading, grading for the home sites would occur after building permit approval. It's proposed that less than one acre is going to be disturbed. So there was no need for, to incorporate stormwater volume control in the design. Wetland boundaries were delineated. A notice decision was received for that. And county regulations will be requiring conservation easements over wetland areas on lots that are less than ten acres. And so on the northern lot there, there will need to be conservation easements surrounding and protecting those wetland areas. The natural resource department also noted that there is floodplain on the site, and noted that the home needs to be proposed outside of the floodplain, and also noted what the lowest floor permissible is. And if any disturbance is being proposed within the shoreline overlay district, when the home is built, there will need to be a separate grading permit for that. That shoreline district extends a hundred feet from the top of bank. Porter Creek is a protected water course, and the Minnesota DNR was notified. They have no comments regarding the request. Sand Creek Township has reviewed this request, and they have recommended approval of the request. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning preliminary plat and final plat, based on the criteria in the staff report, and subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report, that must be satisfactorily addressed prior to county board consideration of the project. I'll certainly stand by for any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Robbins?
Mr. Hall, can you explain, I'm just informational, what's the difference between transition reserve and transition reserve cluster?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, transition reserve, so we have areas of the county that are guided in our two thousand forty comp plans, comp plan for transition. And zoning districts that apply there would be transition reserve, which is a one-unit-per-forty-acre district, minimum parcel size is forty acres. In order to create smaller lots, smaller lots for farmsteads, or to create a vacant lot, as they're proposing in this project, they obviously want to create a lot less than forty acres. And so they need to rezone the property to transition reserve cluster, which allows a maximum density of one unit per ten acres. However, it does not allow properties to be evenly split into ten-acre parcels. It requires that density to be clustered. And it also requires land to be preserved in future development outlots. And so those, I would say, would be the difference between the transition reserve cluster.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thanks. Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, Chair? Commissioner Pika?
The Porter View, is it, I see a stalker acre has been crossed out. Was there a stalker development out there originally then, or was Porter Acres the whole, the applicants? Or is it the...
Yep. Thank, yep. Thank you, thank you for catching that, Commissioner Pika. The stalker acres in the, that's listed, you'll note that stalker acres is not listed anywhere else in the staff report. It is listed in the motion. That is a typo. Stalker Acres is a project that we've, this board has heard previously. And so if any of the commissioners note that in your motion, make your motion, that it is Porter View is the correct name.
Porter View. Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Hall? Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application before us, they can come up to the podium. There is a sign-up sheet at the podium, and please start with your name, if you'd like to make comments.
Yes, I'll sign up.
Oh, sure. Come on up.
My name is Bryn Rafferty. I live at, just down the road from this proposed, whatever it is.
Okay.
Split. We'll call it a split. I have a couple of questions, because I'm, I just don't understand any of this.
Sure.
So they're going to put, divide it, so there's eight acres along the creek there? Is that a...
One of the lots, yes.
Right. One of the lots will be eight acres along the creek. And that will be used for nothing? Or, I'm sorry, let me get my head straight here. They were talking about putting a house somewhere, but I was unclear as to where that was.
Okay.
Or what the eight acres would be used for, or why we were dividing it with a five-acre homestead area.
Right.
And exactly how that's all going to work with the ten acres that's supposed to be the cluster.
Right. We can answer all of those questions.
Oh, yay. Because I'm, I'm in deep water here.
No, no, no. It's, yeah. And I'll have Mr. Hall come up and explain exactly what the proposal is, and what the eight acre, eight acre, sorry, and what the five-acre parcel is, and where the house is going to be, all right?
Oh, that would be lovely. I'm, like I said, I am completely lost as to what?
Yep, exactly. So we'll be able to answer those questions.
Great. And that, okay.
Did you have another question?
Well, I'm...
If you'd like to make comment, you have the floor.
I just am concerned about the ten-acre minimum thing.
We'll talk about that, too.
Cool. All right. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. Mr. Hall, if you could come up and address those three questions, that would be great.
Yep, yeah. Mr. Chair, so the...
Excuse me, sir. Could you speak up a little bit? You can just go back here a little bit.
All right. I'll try to reject my voice. Yeah, Mr. Chair, the proposed, proposal here is to create an eight-acre parcel on the north side of the creek. That would be a vacant parcel, so the applicant can probably talk more about that, but their intent would be to sell that property. This home, this lot, what they're doing through this preliminary plat process is demonstrating that they're not creating an unusable property. They are creating a property that meets all the requirements to be built on. There could be a new home placed on block one, lot one.
Okay.
As part of the requirements for a transition reserve cluster development, they can't just split off the eight-acre parcel and have the, you know, one hundred and twelve acres remaining. They would need to also create a parcel for the farmstead in order to meet those preservation requirements that are required in the transition reserve cluster district. And so they are required to create this other parcel for the farmstead. So there's only one vacant lot being created here, but there are two lots, one for the existing farmstead, one vacant lot that presumably would be sold to be built on. And the applicant may be able to speak more to their intent.
Can you talk just for a second about the density as well? And what is the required density for this district, and how that applies here? I think that's a question that is inherent in that.
Yep. So in the transition reserve cluster district, the maximum density is one unit per ten acres. But it's not possible, in this area of Sand Creek Township anymore, to split, you know, take an eighty-acre parcel and split it equally into eight, ten-acre parcels. That type of development is not possible here in this area of the county. The requirement is to cluster that density at a maximum of one unit per ten acres. In this instance, it's one unit per sixty acres. And so they're, although they have smaller parcel sizes, they are well within the density limits of this requirements of the transition reserve cluster district.
So the whole one hundred and twenty acres are tied to that density, to those two densities, is what you're saying?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
So that helps them to understand that. And I think that was part of the question that they had.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments?
Hi, my name is Chris Kubis from Kubis Realty, and I'm working with the Henches family to help them create these lots. Gloria and Vicky, or, I'm sorry, Gloria and William are the ones that own it, and they have a son, Joe, Joseph, that continues to farm. Their goal is to continue to farm, but they wanted to sell off one parcel on the north side that really isn't suitable for farming, you know, because it is kind of on that grassy hillside. They wanted to, they wanted to keep the rest of the parcel all in one, you know, but the zoning requirements required us to create another lot around the buildings. Okay?
I'm sorry, can you tell us why?
I love to answer that question, but I can't, because that's what the county required us to do. So in, for farming perspective, the family would have liked to just keep it one big outlot.
Sure.
But to follow the zoning ordinances, we had to do that.
Right.
You know, so the Henches family asked the same question, why? You know, so we had to explain to them why, you know. And Greg did a great job explaining, Nathan did a very great job explaining it to us, so we could pass that on to the Henches fam.
Right.
So, but anyway, that was the Henches' goal.
Okay.
So, thank you.
That's very helpful, Chris.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask?
Commissioner Robbins.
So then I'm assuming that from what you've said, the rest of this is going to be farmed. Am I right?
They're going to continue farm practices, yes.
All right. Very good. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments?
I'll get there, Mr. Chair.
You've got plenty of time.
So I'm Molly. I'm at twenty-one, six-oh-one Red Wing Avenue. And so I appreciate the clarification of the residential lot. So, and I love that they're going to plan on continuing farming, but does this zoning change impact when the time may come that they're done farming? So does it, are we staying at one acre per forty, and one household per forty acres? Or is that when we'd be rezoning and looking at at least ten-acre lots?
Good question. Well, I'm going to have staff respond to that, because it's a little bit of a future-based question.
Did I make my, was my question clear?
Some questions about the timeline?
It was more of like, kind of like, what's the future impact of the larger lot that's going to be farmed? But like, with the rezoning and the cluster, does that, how does that impact the future, what I would assume is inevitable, of homes being built? Is that going to be staying at one per forty acre, or is that when we're looking at one per ten acre again?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. Yep, so the, yep, Mr. Chair, the, in the future, so this doesn't set off any kind of timeline for when the property would develop. That would be up to the Henches in terms of, you know, when they would ever want to do anything more with this property. So it's a one-unit-per-ten-acre density in this area. And so if they want to come back later and take an outlot, now, an outlot cannot be built on. By its definition, it's not a buildable parcel. If they wanted to take this outlot in the future and say, we want to develop it at that time, if we're in the transition reserve cluster district, it's going to continue to be one unit per ten acres. And so they've already used two of those densities. So potentially, there could be additional, I'm sorry, additional density that they could use within that outlot. However, to create those lots, of course, they would need to meet all the requirements of the ordinance, which would mean that they would need to meet preservation requirements as well. There is quite a bit of heidric soil throughout the property, so I'm not sure they'd be able to get those additional ten, potential building eligibility's there. There's also limited road frontage and things like that. But, yeah, potentially in the future, if they were done farming, they could come back, redevelop the outlot...
But, yeah, potentially in the future, if they were done farming, they could come back, redevelop the outlot. But they would have to go back through this process as well. They would have to apply for a preliminary plat, again, final plat, public hearing. Everything would go forward at that point.
Did you have a question?
Mr. Chair, Nathan, I think I heard her ask something different. I think her, and maybe I'm not hearing well. I think her question wasn't with regard to the outlot. I think she was saying the rest of the land is agricultural now. And he, what happens to that later if he wants to develop it? Because I heard her say one in 40, or one in 10. And so I think she's asking what happens to the rest of the agricultural land if he decides to develop it? Is it under the one in 10 rule, or is it back to one in 40?
That's good, yes.
What, was I close?
Yeah, no, that's what I was wanting to know, because I'm-
Yeah, what happened, what would happen later?
Yes.
So I might be able to help answer part of that question. So the overall, this 120 acres is getting rezoned to one per 10.
Okay.
So that means the overall density is 12 lots. 12 lots can go on this property. With this plat, they're gonna create two lots. So there's 10 more lots that the Hentges family can plat somewhere on this property. But what Nathan is saying is they can't just go anywhere. They're gonna have to go in a place that meets our requirements for road frontage, meets our requirements for setbacks, meets our requirements for septic. So there's limitations. So we don't know today if another 10 lots can go on this property. Hentges and Kubish would have to do a lot of site work to determine if you could even get 10 more lots on this property. But that would be the maximum right now, is 10 more lots.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Yep.
Thanks, Bryn.
Thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Bryn. Are there any other questions?
Oh, I'm Eric Newman. I live at 21101 Red Wing Avenue, just across the division here. If you look at the map, most of the farming land on block two is to the left, correct? And then on the right side is mostly native land and wooded areas. I guess, just for a clarifying question, is most of that area that is wooded and native land, I'm assuming is gonna still be the case under this change to the TRC, correct? Because we have three plots, if I understand correct, the 5.21, which is the farmstead, the outlot, which is already up for sale, or the 8.14, and the remaining 106 is the farmable. So just wanted to make sure, clarifying question just that the right half that is mostly wooded and natural resources, native property is gonna stay and continue to be until, you know, another one of these meetings comes up, if they wanna divide further.
Mr. Hall can address that as well.
And so.
I'll answer that for you.
That's fine.
So.
You have to start with your name also.
Oh, yeah. Chris Kubish.
Thank you.
And so, for you guys to clarify, I'm gonna use my finger on here. Because I don't know how to do it on this thing. But right up here is where the lot, the lot's gonna be here. So pretty much all of the tree area is gonna still be maintained by Hentges.
Right. And that's all I'm gonna say, native. So you got that plot to the left right there, where your left is native, prior.
Yeah. So you got your, the ravine that goes down here.
Yeah.
You know, as a, we can't control what the next landlord is gonna do. So we plan to, you know, that's all gonna be there. I believe the person that is gonna be interested in is, are gonna be buying that property, you know, for the trees and around, you know. So we don't see that anybody's gonna be taking any of that down.
So just to clarify, there's a lot that you have for sale already?
Yes.
The farmhouse. We're talking a house being added or removed?
No. We're creating one lot, and that's gonna be a sell, sold off for someone to build a home in the future. Okay? The existing farmhouse or farm buildings, they're requiring us to turn that into another lot to meet their zoning requirements. But they don't plan on selling that either.
Yeah, and the remaining lot is gonna stay at.
And the outlot is just basically, they're gonna continue to farm it.
Where exactly is the eight acres? I live right across the road.
Are you here?
Yep, I'm Niles Schwart.
Okay. Right across the road is that ravine that goes down there?
Yep, the drainage ditch.
So it's all to the north?
We can't see what you guys are talking about.
We can't see what you're, maybe if you could assist with us.
Nathan, show us. There.
Right, the eight acres, right, and-
Okay. Do I have to push a button? All right. So it comes down here, there, alongside this way, and right up along the ravine.
Okay. Now we all can see what you guys are discussing.
So they're not looking at building to the left, or to the south of the drainage, it's only on the north side?
We're creating the lot to the north.
To the north, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate the clarification on that. Are there other questions? Okay. Please start with your name, and there's a sign-up sheet at the podium.
My name is, excuse me, Niles Schwart. I live at 21051 Red Wing Avenue, and I am directly across from that property. So out of everybody, I'm gonna be, see everything that's going on over there. So a couple of questions I have is, it's fine if they wanna do this. I mean, I got no problems with that. I mean, I love the land over there. I hate to see this happen. But mine is more on the road construction. You've got the dust coating. With previous lots that have been developed down the road, we get all the construction traffic. I'm the first one on the road, so it's just so much dust. And all these construction crews, gravel trucks, everything, they're just flying down the road. I mean, they're not, they're in a hurry. And I understand why. But that, it is a big concern, because we, my place is the closest to the, is very close to the road right there. So my, so if you do, you know, go ahead and, you know, they're proposing this. I mean, if it goes through, I would like to see something done with the dust coating. And, you know, whether it's like twice a year that they really maintain it, you know, I mean, all the way up to the stop sign, so that all that dust is, you know, controlled. I guess that's, would be one of my biggest issues there. Yeah, really, I guess everything else has pretty much been answered, you know. Just the speed of the construction traffic and the amount and the dust, controlling the dust. Because I've, I've lost a lot of trees along there, and I've got no protection from all that dust. With all of a sudden, you get hundreds of cars coming and going, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So clarification, Mr. Hall, it's a township road?
Correct, Mr. Chair. It is a township road. And we do have representative from the township here tonight to answer any questions, if you have questions regarding the maintenance of the township roadway.
Okay. My question would be, is how often are they oiling during the season if the township is here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chad Sandy, Sand Creek Township. So the Sand Creek Township has a, has a dust coating policy. It's offered to all of the residents that are on gravel roads. And essentially, what, what's approved in the past few years is that, that the township performs the administration of the dust coating and that the, that the residents can apply to have their, their dust coating taken care of in front of the residences. And it's, it's 300 feet long, the width of the road. And, and then the township participates in 50% of that cost, should they choose to do that. If they would like to have more done, they can do that. But then they pay the, they pay the full, the full boat. So if the, if the construction were to cause that problem, you know, there's little we can do about it. But if the resident has chosen to take care of, or to take advantage of the dust coating policy, you know, one of the things that they could do certainly would be to make sure that, that it, that it is taken care of in the, in the spot that, that is affected.
Okay.
And we, you know, we don't necessarily, as a township, you know, dictate where it's going to go. We do have some other policies about, about at our intersections and stuff like that, about, about how we do coat them. And this one is, the nearest intersection is Red Wing and South Sutton Boulevard up there. And, and that is, that is oiled as a part of our dust coating thing. But there is a stretch of road there between, between that intersection and Mr. Schwartz's driveway that, that would certainly be untreated.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for township. Do you participate in once a year or twice a year?
Our policy is once a year.
Once a year.
Yep, and we generally, we generally have it happen like the last two weeks of May or the first week of June, depending on weather conditions, you know. And, and our, you know, we've, we've learned that, that our kind of township road policy is, is pretty generous, because there's a lot of other townships that don't even do anything with it, or nor do they participate in the, in, in part of the cost. And by us applying it in the, in the spring like that, our policy is, is that we don't, we don't grade through it until after September 15th of the year, or if, if a road condition came to, came to pass that, that required us to do so. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Chad, is, was there a, did you say a dollar amount at 300 feet, roughly?
There is, there is. It really, it really varies. But this year, I think it was $350, so if, if I recall. So I think the township was essentially sharing 150 of it, and then, and then the residents, the balance. But the cost of the sodium chloride goes up and down quite a bit.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully that was helpful. Okay, are there any other comments? You can come back up.
Niles Schwart, again, right across the road. And I understand the township's policy. I've been doing dust cleaning for 30 years, so I understand that. They've already graded it, and it's already getting dusty. And it's gonna be very, very dusty now, all, all winter long. The roads are gonna get washboard, because they're gonna get frozen up. And it becomes quite an issue with, with the rough roads when they start doing all of this traffic. So it'd be nice to see that if they could do something about it, whether it's grading it more, a second coat of dust coating to try and control all of that dust during the construction. That would be much appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hentges, second Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion for action on this at this time.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning of 120 acres from, yeah, I think, 120 acres from Transition Reserve District to Transition Reserve Cluster District and the preliminary plat and final plat of Porter View, consisting of two lots and one outlot on 124.5 acres, noting that this recommendation is subject to approval of the conditions listed in the staff report that must satisfactorily, that must be satisfactorily adjust prior to the county board consideration of the project.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Does he have a second?
I'll second it and maybe make a note that the township has recommended approval.
That's acceptable as an amendment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have a second by Commissioner Huber. Any other discussion?
One comment, that Stocker Acres is in there. Again, did you?
Yeah, he said Porter.
I said Porter View.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He did it the correct way. Thank you. Any other comments before I call for a vote? All in favor of the motion before the board? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Good job, John.
Our next item is the planning manager's report, or update. I'll go to Mr. Davis for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, since our last meeting, the county board did approve two applications. On September 16th, the county board did approve the preliminary and final plat of Stocker Acres. That's the project we've been talking about. That was approved in mid-September. That was in Helena Township. Also, on October 7th, they approved the rezone of 40 acres and a preliminary and final plat of Keighley Edition that created two lots in Sand Creek Township. So those are the two items on your recommendation the county board did approve. Couple of other updates. We officially received the Metropolitan Council's system statement for Scott County. That means that we and all other cities and counties in the Twin Cities region are now officially noticed that here's your, here's your checklist, here's the things you need to include in your plan update, and you have three years to get it completed. And so that puts us at the end of 2028. We'll need to have a completely updated long-range plan. We'll be calling it the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. I know many of you, or some of you, worked on our 2030 and even 2040 plan. And so we do this every 10 years, and we will start the process. Probably most, we'll start it in early 2026. We'll probably be holding a series of workshops with the planning commission throughout the entire process. But starting in 2026, getting some initial feedback, ideas, things that you think as a commission we should really focus on for the plan update. We also plan to meet with our townships, like we've done in the past, ask those same questions. So we're starting to lay that schedule out for 2026. We'll be doing some community engagement and survey work and focus groups and stakeholder meetings. So we wanna start putting that together, and I'll share that with you when that gets developed. So just letting you know that the 2050 planning process officially begins now. And again, it's not just the county, but our, our cities, too, are starting to think about it. And so I, we'll need to coordinate a lot with the cities, and particularly their long-range growth areas, their urban service areas where they plan to extend sewer and water. We'll really wanna focus on that, because that led to a lot of discussion, I'd say, among our townships and cities recently. And so here's a chance for us to revisit that and look at where the cities plan to grow over the next 20 years as it relates to annexation.
Mr. Chair, that checklist is from that council?
Yeah, so this is what they do every year. After they do their regional plans, they boil them down by geographic area. And for each jurisdiction, they say, from all our regional plans, this is the information. It's really important to your community.
Is there a possibility we get a copy of that, or can we see that?
Yeah, I'll send an email with a link.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
That'd be great.
Mr. Chair, thanks. Just so that I understand, this is the first step toward developing the 2050 comp plan? Is, did I hear that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So more to come on that. And then the other update is in November, I think we have just a couple, two, three, no, maybe now four items, so it'll be a little bit more on the agenda. But we also wanna do a workshop. We want to bring back that variance issue where we did not have a survey of the property, and that led to some discussion between the neighbors. And I think you advise staff to look at whether we can avoid that in the future and require some surveys. And so we've done that. So we wanna come back and talk through that with you before we hold a public hearing and amend our ordinance. So that'll be a workshop in November. That is all I have for an update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else for the council before I adjourn? Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. Staff and- Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone, staff and, and fellow commissioners. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, a motion by Commissioner Robbins.
Second.